All right, everybody. Welcome. Time to call this meeting of the Monroe County Council to order for Tuesday, October 25th. And I would like to note for the record that we have all councilors here in the NatU Hill Room once again. This has been a lot of together time and I really love it. Um, we do not need to do a roll call since everybody's here. And I will move ahead to the adoption of the agenda. I, I would like to make a couple of changes. Um, and I would ask for unanimous consent for them. The first is to remove item eight from the agenda. Uh, per the partitioners request, they've asked for it to be pulled until we have time for a, an economic development commission meeting, is that what? Yeah. Um, and then also I would like to add an update on the Economic Vitality Project, uh, from Jen Pearl. And I'm going to add that, that should be a very short item, but um, I was going to add it right after department updates. Um, she's on her way here. So if she's here, we'll do it then. If not, we'll do it after aviation. Which is number four. Um. So those are the two changes. Could we, um. How do I ask for you? I'm asking for unanimous consent. How do I do that? What do I say?
Hearing no objections?
Yeah, or does anyone have objections?
All right, no objections. Then that's what's gonna happen. That's so powerful. Um, does anyone else have any changes? To the agenda? All right. Then we will move on to item three, which is department updates. Um. I believe we have our treasurer's office wanting to make an update for us. I apologize, I'm not on Zoom yet. I'm still logging in, so I don't. I don't have a visual. If Jessica McClellan is on Zoom, please allow her to speak. All right, while we're trying to figure that out. Are there any other departments who have updates for us? See. I'm checking to see if she's on the. She is not. Okay.
Pearl is here.
Great. Well, we will hear from her another time then. Um. If, um. Megan and Molly, if you happen to see her join, flag me down in case I miss it. Um, then that brings us to our newly added items. Um, and update on the Economic Vitality Project. Um, Jen, come on up if you don't mind. That'd be great. Welcome.
Thank you so much. It's great to see everyone in person and thanks for including us in your agenda tonight. We wanted to provide an update on the Economic Vitality Project. Um, and if for anyone who's listening on Katz, my name is Jen Pearl. And I'm the president of the Bloomington Economic Development Corporation. And I'm out of breath because I literally ran through the rain. So, sorry about that. Um, we're a nonprofit that serves all of Monroe County in advancing economic development for the community. And economic development is defined as fostering conditions for prosperity for everybody in the community. Uh, we've been working on the Economic Vitality Project, um, publicly since June. Um, this is an initiative to pull people together around key areas to advance those areas for our community. Um, to address some of the biggest challenges. Those include land use and infrastructure, housing, business and employment creation, workforce development and quality of life. Um, we've had some really great engagement recently. Uh, in late September, we had a series of working groups. And I know we've had, um, counseling engagement in those groups as well as in other focus groups. We had close to ninety community members that participated across those sessions. So we've had fantastic input. Um, the readout that I wanted to provide for you today are some of the initial goals. Um, and you may have received some of this in greater detail if you were part of one of those groups. Um. The five goals across those main areas include land use and infrastructure. Finding ways to invest in land use and infrastructure that balances needed housing and employment development. While balancing our goals for rural preservation and other sustainability in the community. On housing, we're looking to increase the availability of affordable, quality housing for existive and prospect, existing and prospective residents. Aligned with the community's quality of life, sustainability and employment goals. Under business creation and employment, how do we implement a future forward vision of diversifying area employment and businesses uh, in our areas of specialty as a community, as well as our emerging areas of specialty? Under workforce development, how do we retain and develop local talent while attracting new talent by increasing the number of living and high wage jobs and improving awareness of career pathways across the community? And then finally, under quality of life, how do we improve quality of life for our neighbors by enhancing the region's strengths in arts, culture and recreation while improving health, safety and social issues in the community? Um, there is a slew of recommendations under each of those five areas. Um, and we're happy to share those as you need. Um, we really appreciate council's engagement in this process. I'm happy to answer any questions about it. And then the other thing I wanted to do is give a quick plug. Uh, we have a community survey that's out there. So if everyone can go to economicvitalityproject.com. There's a survey on the website. Again, that's economicvitalityproject.com. And it doesn't matter if you're five years old, ninety-five years old, you live here in the community or you work here and commute into the community. We really, really want a broad, diverse representation um, in who we're hearing from in the community. I should also note that, um, we're finding we're having lower survey representation in some of our outer lying areas. Um, you know, more broadly in the community, uh, out in the county. And so if anyone is connected with sort of an outer lying area, we greatly appreciate if you'd be willing to share those with your constituents. So if you go to economicvitalityproject.com, the survey is there, or if you check us on Twitter or on LinkedIn, you could see um, social media that you can reshare to help spread the word.
Fantastic. Thank you. Um, are there any questions from council for, go ahead?
Yeah, so for those who don't sit on a committee, um, where can we find, um, everything you just read out and, uh, so and where can we find the recommendations?
Yes, so you can go to also economicvitalityproject.com and there's regular updates if you scroll down the page, um, for the latest. Um, and also happy to share, uh, if you reach out to us at the VEDC, happy to share additional details as well. Um, what I was also just reading off from, we had published in the HT a few weeks ago as well.
Sure, sure. And then has the project advanced far enough along that the recommendations are the recommendations of the EVP or are they more forthcoming?
Yeah, that's a great question. So tomorrow we have a steering committee meeting that's going to do a deeper dive on them to say, okay, what can we implement? Um, what's doable? What partners should be at the table? Because it's going to require a broad range of partners um, to achieve these things. So, um, essentially in November and December, we'll be finalizing the recommendations. Uh, as well as outlining some of the financial needs to make sure the program can be implemented. Um, and then we'll start implementation in 2023. I should also mention that, um, you know, looking at what the commissioners had outlined yesterday is some of their key areas for, um, ARPA investment as well, knowing that there's infrastructure, environment, public health and safety. Uh, literally almost everything we're talking about align with some of those priorities. So, um, if that can be additional information that we can submit to the county in terms of what we're seeing about the needs, um, we're happy to share those details as well.
That would be great.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Ms. Pearl? Go ahead.
How long does it take to do the survey?
Less than five minutes, and that has been verified by people who've done it in front of me. So.
I did it. It's very short.
It's, we try to make it as painless as possible.
Awesome.
Thank you. EconomicVitalityProject.com.
What is it?
What have been some of your strategies for reaching out into the county and reaching diverse stakeholders?
Oh yeah, so we've been, um. So, social media, um, listservs, trying to get as many employers and others to share it as possible. Honestly, if, you know, elected officials and other members of government are willing to share it with their lists, boards and commissions, et cetera, uh, we really appreciate that because, you know, there's, there's folks we don't connect with maybe in our daily in day to day, but, um, I think through our networks as a community, we can reach to a broader representation.
Um, when is the deadline, the closing of the survey?
So our initial deadline is the end of October, but we will be looking at, you know, potentially keeping it open longer if needed.
Okay, great. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your time. Really appreciate it.
All right, and that brings us to item, what is number four on the agenda, agenda, which is the aviation department?
Counsel, I moved to approve in the aviation department, the new job description and to simultaneously amend the 2022 and 2023 salary ordinance and fund 11070000 aviation to add account line 14003 assistant director, forty hours, Pat D, non-exempt with an effective date of November 4th, 2022.
Second.
Hello.
Greetings.
Be sure to turn on your mic. Yeah, there you go.
Check. Yeah, nice. Signing in here.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Uh, yeah, thanks, um. Uh, for, uh, engaging with us in this process to, uh, to rectify the, the pay situation for, uh, this position at the airport. Um. We had the WIS representative come out and perform that desk audit. Um, which was pretty interesting. Um. Uh, the, the woman who came out pretty much admitted that they kind of had misinterpreted the job description uh, that was updated in 2019. Uh, and they said they kind of thought it was more of a, uh, a foreman's position. Uh, so when she actually kind of was able to, um, understand, you know, the duties that the incumbent performs, uh, she was like, yeah, okay, you know, I, I see what's going on here. Uh, she, she, she made a few tweaks to the job description, changed the name back to, uh, assistant director. Um, and then, uh, so I was, I was pretty happy with that. I didn't really feel like there was a whole lot of editing that happened with the job description, but it was enough where she was able to come back and warrant a, um, uh, an upscale to, what is it, Pat D? Um, which doesn't really get me where I had wanted per that, uh, per the market comparison. Um, but I feel like it gets us a step closer. And, um, so we're, we're willing to, uh, you know, accept the recommendations of WIS and we're happy to go along and see what happens next year when we get that vacancy because we are, uh, you know, we're still expecting, uh, the incumbent to depart and, uh, now we'll, we'll advertise at that point in time and, and see. See where we get. Uh, our only request though is that with the, uh, with the revised, uh, job description, um, and, uh, reclassification to Pat D, that we recognize the work that has been done, uh, by the incumbent the entire time. Um, and that we, we award back pay to the beginning of 2022, uh, at the Pat D level. Uh, because the incumbent has been performing this work the entire time, but has been, been getting compensated at the Pat C level. Uh, we took a look at the numbers. Uh, to, to make that adjustment or that back pay. It's only a five thousand, it's $5,325.60 for the year to get them to where, to get them up to date to date. And in our one hundreds, because we've had a vacancy since May, uh, which we haven't been able to recruit, recruit for, uh, there's over thirty-five thousand in our one hundreds that will be remaining at the end of the year. Um, so we think it's fair, uh, to compensate the individual for the work that they've been doing.
Okay, um, I'll open it up for council questions or comments at this time. Go ahead.
So, reading the memo from WIS, uh, Wagner Erwin Schily, it was really interesting to see all the added job duties for this position. It seems like it was pretty seriously underclassified. Um, uh, I mean, there's just a substantial list of, of really like performing duties of airport director in their absence, uh, providing daily oversight of construction projects, et cetera, et cetera. It's, that was really shocking to read. So I'm glad we got this done.
Yeah, I, I guess I have to blame myself somehow because we, we reworked this position in 2019 and I rewrote that job description. And I thought I was getting this, I thought I was getting the point across, but I, I guess I, I, I didn't. Um. But when, yeah, it was a wonderful meeting when we, when she came out for that desk audit. Uh, you know, I was really nervous. I didn't know what she was gonna do. I thought she was gonna follow him around with a clipboard all day long, you know, and but it was, it was just really a session where she sat down with me and just said, what does he really do? And um, and she's like, yeah, we, we've got this all wrong, so.
Counselor McKim?
I just want to make sure I understood. The motion as read though, is effective November first.
Fourth.
Fourth, right? Okay, so the motion that's on the floor now, somebody would have to make a motion to change it, to make a retroact.
Yes.
Just want to make sure I understood.
That's correct. Go ahead.
I would like to note, one of the, one of the bigger motivations besides. Trying to be fair to our employee is also uh, if there's any chance that I have, you know, to uh. Change this person's mind when it comes to leaving next year. Uh, if there's. Any little thing that I can do, because the person's a great performer. And if there happens to be a point in time next year where they're hap, where they happen to be reconsidering their, their situation. Um, this might help us with, with retention next year.
Uh, Counselor Hawk, um. I would have uh, problems with taking it back to the first of the year. Because then we would have to do everyone's that way. Uh, not, not just this particular person. However. I know that there were delays in getting this addressed. And so for us to take it back maybe a couple of months because part of the delay was just, we just couldn't get to him, if you recall.
I do, yeah.
And so I don't know whether two months would be uh, sufficient to try to make up this delay. That we indeed were a part of. That's, I would support that, but I, I really. It, even if my heart of hearts would like to take it back to the first year, we have to treat everyone. Uh, every employee as fairly as we can, and we know if we do something for one, we've got to figure out how we're gonna do it for everyone.
I mean, I think that's a, a fair, I mean, I think a compromise like that.
What date would you say would be a good date?
I don't know. Does anyone on the other side have any comments?
September something? If we went back two months.
September first. I think that, I think that's when we were discussing changes in salaries.
The desk audit happened on September fifteenth, it looks like.
When, when did we authorize the desk audit?
On August twenty twenty-two, WIS was notified via email.
So, August.
Yes, be honest. And they usually like to do it on a payroll bound.
Are we able to figure out what the payroll?
What would be the first payroll in August?
Does our council staff know?
Yeah, I'm, I know.
Okay, all right, I'm sorry. We're, we're down a person, so. I will, I have to say I do like this compromise, um, because I was feeling very hesitant about setting a precedent. That then really, we would, we shouldn't be beholden to, so.
But on the other hand, recognizing that it took us a while to.
Yeah, right, yeah, that makes sense.
I'm trying to uh, look through the agendas as fast as I can in August to see when uh. When we may have decided on this, and I just looked at the August regular session.
I believe we did it at the twenty-third, on the twenty-third.
And I show, it's, it's not there.
It was a work session.
Yeah.
It was a work session in August. Spot.
August twenty-third.
Word was right here.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, yeah. So we can narrow it down.
So it was the August twenty-third work session.
Twenty-eight.
What we could do is make a, a motion to say the.
First payroll in August.
Yeah, 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 or.
Counsel, I, I amend, I move to amend the motion on the floor to make it effective, the first payroll in August.
Second.
That's good. Great. Is there any discussion on that amendment? All right, then could we have a roll call vote on the amendment? We'd like a roll call vote on a minute, on the amendment.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
You guys got me again.
Yeah, we have to vote on the, a whole thing.
Right, it's just the amendment to change.
Yeah, okay, so is there any discussion on the rest of the motion? All right, then we'll go ahead and call the question and have a vote.
I'm sorry.
You're fine.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yeah.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Great, thank you.
Would like to say, if I. So, if we do have that vacancy next year, what, what we're gonna plan on doing is advertising two months before he vacates. And uh, so hopefully it goes well.
Yeah.
Hopefully it goes well. If it doesn't, I'll be back. You'll be hearing from me, but we're just trying to do what's best.
That's fair.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We try to make it fun.
Yeah, thanks.
All right.
Our next uh, item is item number five on the agenda from the Monroe County Public Library.
Counsel, I move to approve the Monroe County Library's request for an additional appropriation in fund. Zero zero six one zero 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 rainy day in the amount of five million dollars in the capital category.
Second.
Hello and welcome. Yeah, push buttons till it's green.
Good evening to you all. I'm Greer Carson. I'm the new director of the Monroe County Public Library and good to see you all again. We are here tonight to seek. Additional appropriation, the amount of six million dollars, five million dollars from our rainy day fund. And one million dollars from our library improvement reserve fund specifically for the purposes of paying for construction of the Southwest branch. Uh, over the past several years, the library has taken its annual operating surplus and put it into library improvement reserve. And rainy day specifically for this purpose. As of today, I'm pleased to share that construction is not only on track, but we're a little ahead of schedule. We have run into very, very, very few setbacks and we are still on target for opening in mid-May. We will be hiring between eleven and thirteen new staff members. Including a branch manager and have had some wonderful public feedback on the construction process itself and certainly anticipation of the branch opening in May. So we are here to answer any questions you may have.
Great, thank you. Um, are there any questions or comments from council members? Counselor Hawk?
Um, just uh, for the public to, to know the reason why uh, the council. Uh, votes on some of your circumstances. You're not an elected board. And so therefore the elected board, which is the county council, would votes on your financials. Um, and if you were just a city library, it would be the city council, but since you're a county library. I know, you know all of this, but people at home don't know that.
Yeah.
Uh, that since you're a county library, we, the county council, vote on it. Now, what is different? Unless this has changed, what is different is that um, what you. What you have to tie your, it, you tie your budget to the growth levy, the growth percent. And not your tax rates and levy, not your tax rates and levies, which is really different from the way county government and others work. And so that then allows you to be able to grow your loan funds and get the money saved back in rainy day. And so you actually have been saving toward uh, this facility rather than having to do a lot of bonding for it. And I know that sounds like a round robin to talk about this, and I know that people just want to get the library and forget about the money. But some people really want us to know what we're voting on.
Sure.
And so I, I just wanted to share with you the reason why it's different with the library. And of course, we do have appointments to the library board.
Yeah, thank you.
Other comments or questions? Correct me if I get any of them.
No, I mean, it's just because, because it went over the, because their budget, right, because their budget went. With this appropriation would go over five percent over the.
Right.
The, the previous.
Oh, that's right. That's a reason why we did the additional appropriation, because you went more than your budget. And it's the budgeted amount, not the tax rates and levies amount that we vote on. I left out that part, yeah.
Um, no, I, I did some drone pictures of the uh, construction the other day. It looks, it's spectacular. Really excited about it.
Yeah, I was gonna.
I, I know one of the things I was very concerned about, and I hope that you're continuing to watch. Is that we're not hurting the other libraries. Uh, as far as staff and, and offerings, and I've been promised and promised that is the case.
It's a very big priority for us to make sure we're, we're taking care of our legacy facilities and, including our flagship facility downtown. You can't take for granted that people will continue to patronize the library the way they have. Because you have more access through another facility, which means to some extent. You're sort of reimagining what you can do with your legacy facilities in light of having a bright and shiny, exciting new building. So it's a, it's a big priority for us, for sure.
Other, yes, go ahead.
Well, one thing I wanted to add to kind of this story is that the library's worked very hard to have these dollars available. And this very public uh, discussion on that is of course, a formality of what is legally required that the library put that work in. And I think that's huge, something that both you and your predecessor have talked a great deal about. And I also want to. Yeah, count, this will be very partial to Councilor McKim and I. I, on the new library branch, I want to compliment the work that the library did to uh, really accommodate concerns around. Some of those trees in the area that the students have planted, it works hard on. And really would either, either your way to add that in and make that very convenient to both the area, the neighborhood, et cetera. I think it is going to be just tremendous for that area. I'm excited for it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions? I'm really excited about this project and just as a reminder, we're voting on just the five million. And then we will do a second vote on the one million, just the way it's um, set up in the agenda. So we'll go ahead and um, have a roll call vote.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
You want to go ahead and just read the motion then?
Counsel, I move to approve the Monroe County Library's request for an additional appropriation in fund twenty-eleven zero 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 zero. Library Improvement Reserve Fund in the amount of one million dollars in the capital category.
Second.
And I assume we, I shouldn't assume. Do we have um, any other council comments or questions? And before we have this vote, I forgot to ask for public comment on the last one. So if there's any public comment on either of these. Um, if you're online, please raise your hand and we can allow you to unmute. And I see nobody in the room. All right, um, we will go ahead and have another roll call vote, please.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
And there you have it.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Best of luck with the rest of the project.
Thank you.
Now we move to item six uh, from the Board of Commissioners.
Counsel, I move to approve the Commissioner's request for an additional appropriation in fund one thousand zero one six one. General Fund County Buildings in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars in the Supplies category.
Second.
Welcome, Ms. Purdy.
Good evening. And Cheryl, I haven't seen you. You look fabulous. You're welcome. Okay, so we are on the first um, the first item, is that correct, for the additional appropriation?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, general fund county buildings.
Alrighty. Did you guys read it already? I'm sorry, I wasn't obviously paying attention.
Sure. Uh, this is a Commissioner's request for additional appropriation in fund one thousand zero one six one general fund county buildings. In the amount of twenty-five thousand in the Supplies category.
Thank you, sorry.
You're welcome.
All right, the, um, the reason for this is, um, first, we actually have two account lines that we're looking at, um. Materials and parts line, and we've already done a transfer within that, within category transfer of four thousand dollars. We currently have a balance in there of one thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars, thirty-five cents. Um, that request is for five thousand. The um, second account is for cleaning supplies and we have also already um. Performed a four thousand dollar transfer, uh, category transfer in that fund. Um, however, we are actually in the negatives. Um, in excess of nine thousand dollars. So um, we are requesting a total of twenty thousand dollars, hence um, the total of twenty-five thousand.
All right, do we have questions to my right? Yes, go ahead.
I, my first question is on the cleaning supplies line that was nine thousand dollars and the whole, is that just uh, an increase in? Demand for cleaning supplies or is that uh, in, in a, a budgeting issue where we just didn't ask for enough in that line?
I really don't know the answer to that. And the reason I say that is, is we got thrown off um, in twenty. And with COVID, um, and we had a separate fund and things went a little. You know, we had different um, accounts for paying and so. It was difficult to determine how much was truly what we needed for cleaning, what was actually added for the um, the COVID. Um, cleaning that we did in addition to normal cleaning. And so I think that probably a combination, and it was probably a combination of. Me thinking that we wouldn't need as much money as we do.
I, I suspect it was also because we were trying to keep the total amounts down and so places were cut that maybe shouldn't have been.
Yeah, yeah, I really don't, um, I don't like to have to come back for these things, but um.
Other questions or comments from council? Um, is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
I'd be.
Counsel, I move to approve the Commissioner's request for a category transfer in fund one-one-three-eight-zero-zero-zero-zero. Cum, cumulative capital development of twenty-six thousand dollars from the capital category to the services category.
Second.
Um, okay, this is another one of those examples of where we didn't um, appropriate enough in a particular account for um, what we were expecting. And so we do have um, money available in, in our capital account line for the ADA. Um, and so we're requesting that that should be transferred over so that we can use it.
And you don't have, I guess I'm just gonna ask a question.
And um, you don't have um, remaining ADA compliance projects slated for this year or anything?
Correct, yeah, okay.
We don't.
Are there other questions?
That was my question.
Are there any questions from council? All right, um, public comment on this item? All right, um, go ahead and have a roll call vote, please.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
And then we go to item C.
Counsel, I move to approve the Commissioner's request for a category transfer in fund one-one-three-eight-zero-zero-zero-zero. Cumulative capital development of a hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars from the capital category to the services category.
Second.
Okay, um, this is, this, we, we did not do well in. Okay, um, this is, this, we, we did not do well in apparently in budgeting our cumulative capital development funds um, for this year. Um, one of the things I know that we just learned um, was that we, our um, Microsoft software um, package, which was in excess of a hundred thousand dollars um, was due. And so um, we're hoping to just transfer from uh, Parks Alternative, which is actually a highway um, project. I think it's a bicentennial uh, lane um, project. And even with the transfer, we will still have four hundred thousand dollars in that line, should something
Okay.
get done miraculously the next two months. Otherwise, it just will continue for next year.
Are there any questions? Yes, Council?
I just recall in our last bu- the budget session, we just went through, we had a conversation about licensing costs and how expensive they were going to be. So I imagine we're gonna be having this conversation over again.
Yes, indeed.
Software licensing, that's what you're referencing.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, software licensing.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions on this item? I just uh, realized that um, I can do a voice vote for this, since it's a category transfer. There's only objection to that.
No.
Okay, in that case, um, oh, public comment first? I see no public comments. Therefore, all those in favor of approving the Commissioner's category transfer in Fund one one three eight, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion pass. Item D?
Counsel, I move to approve the Commissioner's request for an additional appropriation in Fund one one seven zero zero three zero seven Public Safety Lit Fleet in the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars in the Services category.
Second.
Tell us about this one, please.
But yeah, um, so th- this again, it's the Sheriff Vehicles that we are maintaining. And currently um, in the negative um, in that particular fund of fifteen thousand dollars. I went back before, so I don't know if you guys want to take this into consideration. I don't think we need the seventy-five. I think we can make it with forty. Based on an average, about twelve thousand dollars a month is what it costs us to maintain these. We can take the seventy-five, we won't use it if we don't need it, but just wanted to throw that out there.
Counsel, ask unanimous consent to amend the motion on the floor to uh, to change seventy-five thousand dollars to forty thousand dollars.
So then.
Forty thousand.
Forty.
Four zero.
Uh-huh. So then, okay, um, do we vote on that? Are we unanimously consented? So now we're still, okay. I'll catch on eventually. Um, any other comments? Questions? Already then, uh, we will have a roll call vote on this one.
Counselor McKem?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
We are on item E.
Counsel, I move to approve the Commissioner's request for a category transfer in Fund four eight zero four zero 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 Geo Bond twenty fourteen Capital of forty-seven thousand dollars from the Supplies category to the Capital category.
Second.
Well, um, I don't know what happened, but this is the incorrect bond number. It should be four eight zero eight. I don't know if that affects um, our ability to address this situation right now. The account lines are, are correct, but it truly is the four eight zero eight twenty sixteen General Obligation Bond.
Do we know what was advertised?
Twenty?
In the packet, it says four eight zero eight. But I
Oh, it does.
It does?
Wait.
What I've said is incorrect.
It says four eight zero four on the one that I
Yeah, the one I'm looking at said four eight zero four.
On the agenda request, it says four eight zero eight.
Oh.
It's just a category.
That's true. Oh, you're right. That's, you're right. We don't have to advertise.
So we should be able to do it. We just need to correct it here.
Uh, ask unanimous consent to state for the record that this is Fund four eight zero eight dash zero zero zero. Still the Geo Bond two thousand fourteen.
Sixteen.
Sixteen, two thousand, sorry, Geo Bond two thousand sixteen.
Two thousand sixteen.
Unanimously consented.
Right. Try to get that changed, because we don't go back and look at that.
Yes. Okay. So now that we know what we're talking about, could you tell us a little bit more about what we're talking about?
Yeah, definitely. So um, when we do the bond budgeting every year, um, there's X amount of administrative fees. And um, when I was first starting to do this, I didn't have a good um, grasp of how much the fees were actually going to be. And um, so we actually have a number of bonds that have some additional funds in the administrative line um, that we don't, can't use because we have capital projects. Um, and so um, assumption, we're just requesting that the, the money that's remaining in that particular line, which is forty-seven thousand dollars, um, be moved into and um, the Parks um, Vehicle Tenant Scrubber Line. Um, we could certainly use it in their parks is always in need of some kind of um, um, vehicle, um, yeah, or, or something of that nature. Or there is also, um, I think that doesn't really matter. Um, so we're just asking, requesting that it be, be put in there. And we can still use it because of the nature of the original um, bond ordinance. We're still meeting the, we're using the funds in the same manner in which the ordinance was approved.
Are there any council questions? Go ahead.
What is a tenant scrubber?
You know, I, I don't know, but I actually I even asked Kelly, what in the world a tenant scrubber was?
It's like equipment?
It's, yeah, it's a floor machine.
Oh, like, oh, like
Tenant is a brand. It's actually two N's, I think it's
Uh.
Wrong on the, I know, tenant scrubber sounds kind of funny.
Like you're rubbing a, a renter or something.
Yeah, exactly.
I'm just very impressed that you have that down.
Okay, so what, I, I, if, I just wanna tell you what I think I understand and if that's correct. So you can take administrative fees that you know aren't going to be needed for this bond and pu- move them into this um, for, to this fun item line, that's the word. For these things, because you had a Parks Project for Capital something or others in the twenty sixteen bond.
Yeah, so the twenty sixteen um, General Obligation Bond, uh, I think it's or, it was ordinance two sixteen dash twenty-four. Um, it highlights the different um, projects that were approved at that time. And so let's see here. Um, let's see, you've talked about H-BAG, um, trail improvements, sewer line and decking, remodeling improvement, um, where is that? Oh, here it is. It's like, what has happened to that? Um, it just says municipal vehicles. Um, didn't say anything about a tenant scrubber specifically.
Hmm. And it wasn't specific to parks, it's just vehicles for?
Yeah, so that's um, yeah, what was actually approved by, by you guys did not define. But what was ended up being put into the financial software?
Uh-huh.
Um, made it specific to parks, because that is what, when we were talking about it, we were looking at parks at that time.
Okay.
But the real, the real um, defining is your bond documents.
So is there an issue with putting a scrubber, which I'm now calling a floors and bonie?
Yes, yeah, okay.
In, under municipal vehicles? I mean, is that gonna?
I, I don't know how that got to be there. I mean, the, the issue is there's no scrubber in the ordinance that established this bond. It does reference vehicles. I don't know what happened in the auditor's office side of things, um, as to how that account was named, because and I don't name them.
I see, that's, okay. Alright.
I'd like to name them, but I don't.
And you can, you know what I would name it? Um, are there any questions or comments from council on this one?
This is sort of, I, I guess this is sort of the equivalent to like, looking under the couch cushions for uh, for money, but and I think it's great that we're actually able to buy stuff we need rather than let it sit there and, and unused fees. So it's, it's great. How many more of these uh, old bond funds do we have?
With, with administrative um, fees, I think we have quite a few. And I've been talking to council or with um, Jeff Cockrell to see if it's something that um, we could just take them all and maybe put them into the newest bond, because then I believe it helps with the rate.
Hmm, okay.
But I might not be right. So that's just kind of what I'm thinking.
Which is why you're asking our turn.
That's smart.
Um, yes.
So looking at these uh, category transfers and the uh, bonds from not really ancient history, uh, but we don't remember them. And I wonder if we uh, might not get from you um, like once a year, a summary of our outstanding bonds, where we are status-wise and financially with uh, with the projects. And you know, the amount of money remaining, you could throw in account numbers for your, for your reference, we don't. And I think that would be really helpful to everyone on the council.
I can do that. Um, it's, it's all, it's all in.
Is that something you could your office could pull for us at like, on an annual basis and we could have it
It would be really
like at a meeting. I just think it would be actually interesting.
Yeah.
Put in public as well.
It's not hard.
I think, yeah, a bond summary would be very interesting for the public.
Um, I sent an email about that, I think, to you.
You did?
Yeah, if not, then it's sitting in my outbox, because I had the same question.
Oh.
And I was just, I was going, I was hoping to give you a heads up that that's something I would, you know, and obviously not for right now, but maybe
Yeah.
we could do it before the bond season when we're doing
Bond season, yeah.
Yes, the bond season.
That's, um, I can definitely do that.
Okay.
An upgrade on, an update on what's um, all the, the projects that are still pending, because we do have a lot of projects that are still pending and
Yeah.
we're kind of rolling around.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there other questions or comments? Yes.
I, I would expect that the auditor's office should have a, a running total of all of these, that you're having to do a lot of extra homework. I bet they can just
That's where I'll get it from, is from our financial software.
Right. But if ever you see any extra money around, I hope you'll have these chairs looked at. I keep getting this bad chair. So once in a while, I get one of the good ones, and they throw you forward.
Uh-huh.
And you know, these chairs get used more than any chair you have at your home.
Oh, I know, yeah.
And how old are these chairs now?
I don't know.
They're considering.
But these
Do you have
Are better than those.
I do, apparently.
Those are horrible.
Yeah. Yes.
Okay, chairs duly noted. Yes.
I always thought that, before I was on the council, I thought the chairs were designed to make sure there are few people from the public stayed for meetings.
Well, that's not very nice.
But really, that, that crossed my mind as I sat there watching council meetings.
I said a little wicker chair on me off.
Are there other comments or questions from council? Is there any public comment on this item? And again, if you're online and would like to make comment, just raise your hand. Not physically, just a little emoji guy. Um, this is another category transfer, so I will do a voice vote for this one. Um, all those in favor of approving the Commissioner's category transfer in Fund four eight oh six? Uh, say eight?
Four eight oh eight.
I knew we changed it. Four eight oh eight, um, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Motion passes. We are now at item F.
Counsel, I move to approve the Commissioner's request for a category transfer in Fund four eight one one zero 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 twenty eighteen Geo Bond Capital Projects of nineteen thousand five hundred dollars from the Supplies category to the Capital category.
Second.
Yes, and same story. Um, we have money left over in the administrative lines and we can't split it to thirties. And um, are unable to use it. So requesting that we move it into another line that currently still has some um, funds available, and that was specific to the um, a building remodels fund. And that can be related to, I believe, ordinance twenty eighteen dash twenty-five.
So the bonding. Are there questions?
Yes.
Any particular building remodel, or is it just kind of a pool for?
It's kind of, um, actually, again, how it was stated was various improvements to county facilities. Um, parking facility improvement, that was a red lot, building improvements, tech point improvements. I believe what we were focusing on at that time was the Justice Building and showers for some tech pointing. So um, I anticipate what we will do is we have another bond where we're going to do an additional um, renovation at the Health Building, take care of that dock and the roof that's looking a little bit bad. Um, and we might be able to just supplement it with this, so.
Counsel Hawk? I was going to mention the Health Building, because it looks, I don't know whether it's because of the moisture that was there or whatever, but it looks like if the wallpaper is peeling off as you come down the hall.
Yeah.
Did I, I, I looked at it and I thought this was a lot of money to make this really a beautiful building.
Uh-huh.
Uh, and try to recapture the history of it. And just regrettably, it's going to have to have repaired.
Definitely, yeah. And um, I, I think when it was four hundred and some thousand, just, that's just my memory. Um, for that, the sixth phase, so everything's going up. So I don't know. So this, this will help. Um, it's not a lot, but nineteen thousand five hundred.
Every little bit helps.
Yeah.
Are there other questions or comments? Is there any public comment? Seeing that just lets you. All those in favor of approving the Commissioner's category transfer in Fund four eight oh four, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. My motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for all the explanation. Appreciate it. Uh, now we're at item seven.
Hey Kate, um, you said forty-eight oh four, it was forty-eight eleven.
Well, for crying out loud.
Sorry.
Alright. All those in favor of the category transfer in Fund four eight one one, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That was passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now we will talk about the Health Department.
Counsel, I move to approve the Health Department's request for a category transfer in Fund eight one 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 zero 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 Crisis Coag supplemental workforce of fifteen thousand dollars from the Supplies category and twenty-four thousand five hundred eighty-six dollars from the Services category for a total of thirty-nine thousand five hundred eighty-six dollars to the Personnel category.
Second.
Great, and it looks like we have uh, Lori Kelly on Zoom with us.
Yes, um, good evening. So the Health Department is requesting to move money from the Supplies and Services line. Uh, this is in the Crisis Coag Grant Fund. This is to continue paying the school liaison through twenty twenty-three. I'm so sorry. Of course, the cat wants to come up here now.
Yes, that's how they do. Um, did you have other, other explanation? That makes perfect sense to me. Okay.
Uh, sure. So the school liaison has been a really tremendous um, asset to not only the Health Department, uh, to the local area schools, but more recently to uh, the public health clinic. So the school liaison has actually been out helping with outreach, um, going to the schools, ha- helping with the vaccination clinics, answering the phones. Um, so although this grant cycle ends uh, technically in June of twenty twenty-three, uh, we don't have restrictions on when we have to use the funding by. And so we really feel like it's going to be a better, more positive outcome if we can keep the school liaison position through twenty twenty-three to be able to continue through twenty twenty three to be able to continue doing some of those outreach efforts, um, being more actively involved in the schools and, um, assisting with the nurses at the public health clinic.
Sounds good. Other questions? Yes.
Uh, so, uh, you, we're hearing that, you know, as we head into the winter, there might be another flare up of COVID and new strains and whatnot. Um, do you see a scenario in which either the school systems or the Indiana Department of Health, uh, will want to extend this program even further?
Yes, um, I'm getting a really good sense of that. I feel that this is something that they're, that the state is really looking at trying to integrate within, um, health departments um, on a routine basis. And I think that's really because of all of the positive outcomes that we've seen from this position with schools, um, across the state. Um, so I, I do think that it's something that we're going to probably see in the future, long term.
Correct.
Other questions or comments from council? Yes, Councilor Munson.
So I, I wonder about, um, other viruses be- besides COVID nineteen because these are very prevalent, uh, especially in areas two hour east. And that means they're probably coming here soon. They're really affecting, uh, school kids. And, um, I do know that there, there are quick tests that we sit in pediatrician offices uh, to determine which virus a child has. And knowing which is, uh, very important for knowing what kind of medication that the child should be on. Would this, uh, would this position be able to, uh, be dealing with anything other than COVID nineteen?
Um, I think to a certain extent, uh, the position itself, at least right now, although the focus has been really on COVID and those outreach efforts, um, it's really moving more now towards, um, helping the school nurses getting out, um, one of the things that we're trying to work on doing is having the school liaison go out and start health fairs. So doing education and outreach on, um, hygiene practices, on stop the bleed procedures, um, all really health focused, important, critical, um, aspects that, you know, children need to learn. You know, just growing up. So I think that we're going to start seeing this position evolve, um, more and more. Um, and I, I don't think that it's, the capacity is going to be limited to, um, just COVID.
Okay. So, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Councilor Hook?
Um, yes, I, uh, know how very serious this is. My daughter's a teacher and, uh, she let me know two days ago she has COVID. And, um, she'd been around her children in school and they went on an outing and and one of the little girls was sick and now my daughter's very sick. And, um, so it's serious. And, uh, there is, uh, they, uh, prescribed something called, uh, you might know what it is and I understand it's free. The government provides it pro-laxative or pro-something or the other. So is that something that you are involved in?
Uh, me personally, the health department?
Hey, well, I mean, if it's like government provided, I just thought you might be aware of it.
Um, so I.
Pax, I was, it's called Paxlovid.
Oh, Paxlovid. Uh, I would.
Free and as opposed to be, cut the symptoms back, get over it sooner. I didn't know whether that was something our health department works with or if that's just something through the federal government or what. Maybe it's just.
So I think that our public health clinic really is focused around vaccinations. Um, it's definitely something that, um, I'll chat with them about to, to check on that. But from my understanding, it's really vaccination, um, focused.
Certainly. I'm not recommending any kind of medicine here. I'm just, you know, I don't want to play doctor. I already tried playing lawyer. But I am really an Indian chief. Uh, but I just thought if that is something that our health department, uh, is involved with, uh, it would be good to know.
Yeah, I don't believe that that is in our, within our scope, but again, I will, um, I will check on that.
Thanks. Other questions or comments from Ms. Kelly? Um, is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, this is a category transfer, so I'll do a voice vote and hopefully get the right fund. All those in favor of approving the health department's category transfer in fund eight one one one, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Um, we do have another item with the health department, B.
Counsel, I move to approve the health department's request for a category transfer in fund eleven fifty nine zero 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 health fund of twelve thousand nine hundred fifty dollars from the capital category to the services category.
Second.
Do you have anything to add on this item?
Um, I think really just that this has been, um, a bit unexpected, uh, compared to previously or even last year, from my understanding, uh, with VaxCare adding Medicaid to their billing recently. Um, we've seen an increase, um, and an increase in the number and the amounts of checks coming in. Um, so unfortunately at this time, um, we're just looking to completely, um, take the funds from that equipment line in order to be able to continue processing these checks. Um, because we don't know how many additional ones to expect until the end of the year either.
Okay. Are there questions from council? Good comments? Are there any public comments on this item? Okay. And, um, all those in favor of approving the health department's category transfer in fund one one five nine, say aye.
Aye.
Um, all opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
We now move to item nine and, uh, we have the sheriff's office. I'd like to go ahead and welcome you all. Um, the sheriff's deputies collective bargaining committee is joining us. Um, you're welcome to sit up here. You can bring chairs or use the bench, how, whatever makes you all comfortable. And, um, if you, if you wouldn't mind also just introducing yourselves for the record, that would be lovely.
Uh, I'm Jeff Finer. I'm a lieutenant with the sheriff's office. I'm Detective Sergeant Peach with the Monroe County Sheriff's Office.
Hey.
And I'll just introduce the other guys.
Okay.
Uh, Deputy Jeff Brown, Deputy Kyle Molden, Captain Randy Jacobs, uh, Sergeant Bennett Dillon, who's elected to the committee, couldn't be here today. He's currently working patrol.
Okay. Well, welcome to all of you.
Thank you.
And you have a presentation or want to?
Well, we have, uh, previously submitted to you some information that was distributed to the county council. Uh, the long and the short of it is that the, uh, bargaining committee as elected by the merit body is asking for a twenty percent increase to the salary ordinance and asking for a five thousand dollar sign on bonus for new hires or recruits with a three-year commitment to the sheriff's office. Reason for this is, as stated in the information distributed to all of you, we are seeing a significant drop in our applicant pool and significant exit from our workforce. The exit from our works, workforce is not going to other counties mentioned in the WIS study that came back when the salary adjustment was made. We are losing individuals to local resources and it is putting us in a position where we are down seven deputies of an available forty five man department. So our, in our decrease in workforce is almost fifteen to twenty percent. Um, we are asking for the salary ordinance adjustment in an effort to retain those folks that we have because everyone that has left our agency has left for a job doing the same or similar function at a significantly higher pay rate. We'd like the twenty percent increase to also attract applicants. Because if you, as I stated to Captain Jacobs earlier, if you look on a website and look at where do I want to be a police officer, what you see is your base starting pay in the same community that you want to be in, whether it's with the sheriff's office or Bloomington Police, Ellisville, IUPD. If you get to stay in Bloomington, you don't see culture. The culture of the sheriff's office is excellent, but you don't see culture. You see a base pay and we are significantly behind in base pay to all of our sister agencies in the community. So to attract more people in addition to a five thousand dollar signing bonus, the incentive of a twenty percent pay increase from what we're currently making will get us closer to where we need to be in salary match for our sister agencies here in the community.
Hey, are there, um, questions? Yeah, go ahead, Councilor Munson.
So, uh, my first question, you know, as I was reading through your document and thank you for providing this.
It's my pleasure.
Really, uh, nice to have that, those three pages to, to read through in preparation for this meeting is, you know, this is happening in every single sector of our economy. It's happening in every single department of Monroe County government where folks are leaving, people are finding it really hard to attract and retain staff. Uh, so you know, why, why is, and I mean this all due respect, but why is the sheriff's department, uh, unique in a way that you're asking for a twenty percent raise, uh, you know, to, to do this when everyone else is also experiencing the same?
Understandable question. I appreciate you asking it. The way we look at it is that if we are losing applicants to other public safety agencies, including the fire department here in our own community, we can't protect it. So as, as I understand that it's happening in, in sectors all over the, the economy and in our county with other divisions of the government, I understand that. I appreciate it. But the fact of the matter is that we work 24/7. We are always on call. We are always on patrol. We always answer calls. There's never a, hey, we'll get to it tomorrow for us. The importance of the role that we play in the community, I don't want to say, well, I will say it, it trumps other functions that can happen and wait, and that can wait till Monday. That can, oh, we'll get it in the morning. We don't have that. We don't have it can wait till Monday. We don't have, oh, we'll get it in the morning when it's a public safety issue. There is a factor that goes into the work that we do that sets this department, this agency apart from other sectors of the county. And sometimes that's a tough thing to say because it's not meant to minimize other divisions of the government by any means. It's just a different job. And it requires 24/7 staffing, three sixty five, no holidays, no, hey, my Saturday is off. We, we do it all the time. The difference is in the work. The work is just different. And if we, and it's that way at all police agencies nationwide, nobody, you know, nobody takes a break. They're all staffed 24/7. So to lose people doing the same job to other sister agencies here in our community, which affects not only the immediate areas directly around the city, but those areas out in your, your areas, Unionville, you know, Steinsville up on Mount Tabor, you know, you go south to Snow, you go Snow Road, that's where we are. And that's where public safety is operating 24/7. You know, it's not, it's not exclusively nine to five, Monday through Friday. It's a different job require staffing year round and round the clock. And we need the people to do it effectively.
Sure.
Uh, so why, uh, twenty percent? Uh, the inflation numbers that came out was a little north of eight percent.
Right.
Uh, how'd you get to that number?
So the, if you, the information provided was taken from us getting various salary grids throughout the county, including IUPD, uh, Bloomington Police Department, Ellisville Police Department. The agency's closest to us where we're losing people. The reason we came up with twenty percent because that puts us just below Bloomington Police's pay matrix projected for twenty three and twenty four. It also puts us behind Bloomington's pay matrix for twenty three and twenty four, as well as IUPD's pay matrix for twenty three, twenty four. Uh, Ellisville Police is getting a ten thousand dollar increase to their salaries, to their police force. For us to put in twenty percent was to get us close.
Right. Questions or comments?
Yes, um, as for me, if we have money to provide additional dollars for any group in this county, it certainly would be for law enforcement and for fire protection of the people at the jail. People in this community, they're tired of seeing the lawlessness that's been going on. And not many of us would want to send our husbands or our sons out there to do the hard work of protecting this community. Uh, I respect you and I think the community, uh, would show respect to those that are providing us to try to get us into a safer place, uh, the respect of making sure you're funded properly. Uh, and, uh, too long, there's been the talk of not keeping you funded as you should be. And so I certainly support whatever we have to do to keep you up to the same level as the other law enforcement agencies right here in this community. Because your folks go to work every day because they love our community, but they can love that community just as much over at this, you know, working for the city or for Ellisville or, or for IU. So, um, we've supported some pretty big raises for some other folks. And I, I just think we, we have an obligation to support our law enforcement and I certainly will.
Uh, do you have a comment? Yeah.
Um, yes, the, the seven vacancies that you currently have, how does that relate to other vacancy rates historically? Like a year ago today? You know, is that, is that seven? Have those seven all come sort of at all of a sudden? Or do you typically have a certain number vacant on average? What?
Um, we, we've been rolling, correct me if I'm wrong, Captain Jacob, we've been rolling about two vacancies, three vacancies tops. Sorry to turn away from Mike from about two to three vacancies, uh, at any given time until about the last six months. When the, unfortunately, that's when Bloomington, uh, Police's contract was approved through the city council. And that's when IUPD announced their large raise for patrol and their 10% match to retirement. And then Ellisville came out with, yeah. And then Ellisville came out with their ten thousand dollar increase. And when that was announced, it was a matter of time before applications were put in and people were hired at other places. Pardon me. We typically will see about a two to three person, oh, hey, we got a spot to fill. We'll get one and then they'll go, you know, two years ago, Morgan County was the hotspot. Wasn't happening across town. It was happening in the corner county north of us. And then we would fill that spot as, as a stopgap. Now we're at seven. So it's gone from operating with missing one guy a shift to missing two guys a shift or three guys a shift. So in, in essence, we see, we see what's happened across town by not getting after it rather early. And we know that we can't just sit by and let it happen to a department with much less manpower. So we're trying to match and get ahead of it.
Thanks. And I, I have another comment about funding later, but, uh, I'd rather. You're right to say.
Councilor Jackard.
Thank you very much for being here and thanks for waiting through our agenda. And my question is, I'm aware of the Ellisville number. My understanding is Ellisville did ten thousand dollars to every public employee they had. I don't know what they did for elected officials. Does that number create the outlier on the numbers you're looking at between city, IU, uh, the, the other agencies and Ellisville? Does the Ellisville ten thousand create kind of this huge disparity or can you?
No, no, it's just, uh, it's, the Ellisville raise is just another straw on the camel's back, for lack of a better term. Um, to be quite honest, in, in my opinion, the Ellisville Police have been underpaid to begin with. Like us, they're paying, they're playing catch up because they are also losing people. Um, the discrepancy is what we're seeing in our local community where we're losing our applicants to, uh, is IUPD, BPD, those agencies, but Ellisville is like, like us playing catch up for fear of losing their workforce.
Thank you.
Councilor Munson.
Oh, excuse me. Would you be able to say again for the public so that they can hear this? Um, how many people, uh, uh, you have lost to IUPD and also to Bloomington PD?
Okay, we, uh, we have lost three, five this year to devote. Sorry, I'm referring to Captain Jacob. Yeah. So total in, in five and the documentation that was sent over, um, to IUPD and, and other agencies around our own community from our own workforce.
I, go ahead. I compare this a lot to what happened with the fire departments. When the fire territory was established and they gave everyone a great raise. And so where did the fire, you folks remember what happened? So the firefighters wanted to go work where they were going to make more money, still do the job that they love doing. And so then when the fire district took in the fire territory, they had to pay all those firefighters what the uh, territory was paying. So that raised all of their salaries up. So then maybe some of the people from the Bloomington Fire Department wanted to go to the fire district because of their paying more. And then Ellisville's losing their firefighters. So it's all, you know, we're all in this circle together. And when one group raises their salaries up, you're, that's what happens. We, we know, we see that with our own employees doing other things that even the clerical jobs. They're going to go where they can make more money for their families. And it seems to me this is a lot, the same kind of thing is happening. See one, one raise and then the other people have to try to match it. And I don't want to see us go shorthanded for law enforcement. I just don't.
Councilor Anderson.
And state police is getting a 40% increase
Yes, sir.
for fiscal year 2023.
Yes, sir. Forty percent.
And so if we were to adopt this 20% increase, that, I mean, they would just, that that'd be so far afield of of where we would be even if we adopt this 20% increase. Correct?
Correct, yes. I'll be quite honest, I think I speak for all of us. We did not want to come in here and ask for a 40% increase.
However.
I don't, I don't think that it's it's applicable with our, with what's in our current community. And I will say this, state police is issuing a 40% pay increase to their employees. We are losing a member of our department to the gaming commission, which is paid on the state police pay matrix. So as much as I would like to tell you, you know, come in here and ask you for a 40% raise to keep away from state police. The thing that that often happens with state police is sometimes you don't get to pick your jurisdiction. Everybody that works for our department lives in county or in adjacent county. They're part of our community. We want to be able to to take people that have set up roots here, raise their family like I have in my, in this community, like other people that are on the committee, have have in this community and stay here. We don't want to relocate our families to Gary or wherever state police may send us.
Thank you.
No offense to Gary.
I'm sorry.
No, definitely no offense to Gary. Being from Gary myself, no offense.
We were talking about Ellisville all night.
I have a question, um, thinking about alternative strategies to retaining and recruiting, um, because as I'm looking at it, I don't think that Monroe County has ever really been able to really compete with Bloomington, City of Bloomington and IU.
If I may?
Yeah.
I'm sorry to interrupt you before you come to your conclusion. I would disagree with your statement.
How so?
When I was a part of a hiring process long ago and far away, uh, that room was packed. And I can tell you, six years ago at North full cafeteria, we had a process six years ago, Bloomington North. And it was a cafeteria full of applicants for both agencies and it was a full cafeteria. Um, historically, we've done very well in an applicant pool. I think with current events or most recent events nationwide, the
Yes.
the job of being a police officer is not so attractive all the time. Let's just put it out there. It's a difficult job and sometimes it's hard to do and it's not always looked on with favor anymore. But that being said, historically, up until recent events, we've had a very significant applicant pool. And we've been competitive for the amount of spots we have available. We've been competitive with city police. IU Police, they have a cadet program on campus, so they're basically feeding their own. They're also now have obviously broadened that to hire from the outside and taken two to four of our very good people. Um, one with 12 years of experience and a supervisor. But the applicant pool as a whole uh, has been competitive. The $5,000 sign-on bonus that we're asking for is kind of the carrot plus the 20% increase to, once you get on to stay here. But the $5,000 sign-on bonus for a three-year commitment, hopefully will have them looking at us as preferred to another agency in our very own community.
I guess I was um, thinking more about starting salaries and um, and our, our Monroe County starting salary versus uh, City of Bloomington versus IU. And we've always been lagging is what I was.
Not necessarily. And I'm sorry to interrupt you again. Myself and Captain Jacob was running the bargaining bargaining committee five years ago. We got the big one. Uh, five years ago, when we were behind Bloomington Police. And with that contract in place, we have since been competitive. Uh, it's always been a little bit of a catch up. Like uh, councilperson Hawk stated, it's kind of one of those ping pongs that go back and forth. Um, but since about five years ago or what is now three contracts ago or two contracts ago, we have made that we've bridged that gap. Um, and since then, we've kind of been going back and forth. I apologize for the hand motions. Kind of been going back and forth. But with their significant increase that they've gotten through the F O P and IU significant increase, we're certainly falling behind significantly.
You mentioned um, a, a job fair. I think that's what I interpreted what you said at the high schools.
Uh, it wasn't a job fair. It was an actual testing site of applicants that have already submitted their applications and gone through a physical testing as well as a written exam. It's the first stage of our hiring process.
I see. What, what are you doing then to recruit? Like, how do you um, advertise your positions? I don't imagine you just go on like indeed uh, dot com or whatever to say, hey, we're hiring. I mean, where do you, where do you get your, your recruits?
Well, we're addressing that through social media. We're trying to use word of mouth in our own community by tapping the resources in our own community. Um, we're utilizing uh, individuals that work over our jail to see if they want to transition to our patrol division. So we're trying to tap our own resources as well as resources within the community through Boys and Girls Club. Um, throughout, like I said, through our social media resources and through our jail. We've also done uh, stands and booths at the county fair, etc. We're trying to get ourselves out there.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it's just a tough job to recruit people for. Thank you. Yeah, there was a recruitment video made by Captain Jacobs and some other people on our team uh, that was distributed and put on social media using current technologies, part of our drone program, uh, highlighting some of the specialties and assets that we have as part of the department, which we didn't have previously, highlighting our canine program, our drone usage, our dive team, et cetera. Trying to highlight some of the stuff that we have in the community. Maybe others don't.
Yes, go ahead. Just as a clarification, you mentioned all of the things that you're doing in terms of um, outreach. You touched a little bit, I, I, I don't think I heard you correct, or I, I don't think I heard it. Um, you had said something about Boys and Girls Club.
We, we have one of our, one of our deputies works in the Boys and Girls Clubs.
Okay, okay. Just, thank you.
If we can.
I was, I joke, I'm sorry. It, I just was referring to hiring children. Go ahead.
Thanks. Um, yeah, I mean, I, the uh, as much as the, the um, vacancy, the large number of vacancies concern me, the uh, low number of applicants, I think is even more concerning.
Certainly.
That's, you know, you, yeah, I mean, that, and so I am interested in, in, well, of course, my concern is always how, how to pay for these increases. I mean, that's kind of the job of the, the county council. And so I know the public safety lit was suggested in, I think, in your memo. Uh, so I've been going over the, the historical cash balances of the um, the public safety lit. And I think the, the best way to look at it is from year to year, end of the year, ca- uh, cash balance. Because that's essentially what's left after your revenues and your, uh, and your expenditures. Uh, in January 1st of 2022, that balance was approximately $3 million. So there's essentially 3 million was in reserves in the um, public safety lit. In um, January 1st of 2023, the projected uh, reserves would be a little under $2.5 million, $2.46 million. Uh, and then uh, at the end of January 1st, 2024, with the budget that we've already adopted, so this is not counting anything that's being proposed here. What was, we've already adopted, we're down to $2.1 million. So we are in deficit in, in um, the public safety lit. We're not, we're not accumulating money. We're spending down money that has been saved in the past. Uh, and so what that makes, that makes me very concerned about taking on additional or major increases to base salaries in general. Uh, because you know, if that number gets too low, then we start, need to start looking about, uh, at eliminating positions. We never want to be in, in, in that position. Now, we still have that, that now, that said, that $2.1 million is still a substantial, uh, still substantial reserves. You know, one way that we measure it is budget as a percentage of uh, the uh, or the cash balance as a percentage of the budget. And back in 2022, we started at 79%, which is huge reserves. That, that's a very large reserves. Now we're down to 57%, which is still quite good. So what that means is that we have the cash cushion right there. We have money that can be deployed towards expenditures. But on the other hand, we don't want to raise our budget structurally by increasing salaries by a great amount because then that could be depleted very quickly. So I guess what that, uh, that's by one way of saying, just based on the P S Lit numbers that I'm looking at, I'm definitely much more comfortable with one-time expenses like retention bonuses or or a sign-on bonuses and that sort of thing than I am in large increases in salary. But that's just based on the uh, this analysis of the uh, of the P S Lit. I'm, I'm, you know, I'm open to other suggestions. I know Counselor Hawk may have some thoughts about that.
Um, we've uh, treated that public safety lit like it was our private little savings account that we could move people or expenses over into public safety. And I was just went along for the ride. But I think that we need to take a look at what we have put in there that is not either law enforcement or the jail uh, operational costs and 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 get that out of there. That's not really, you know, we have put other positions.
But what good, I mean, that's, if all you're doing is moving it over to the general fund.
Well, you know.
Or are you talking about eliminating positions?
We act where we could not continue to replace people. We're, because we, we grew some positions and put them over there because we thought, oh, we had all this money. And now we have law enforcement that needs to be treated fairly and we have spent down money. Now, I understand we've got cash and I understand in theory we just wouldn't use it for salaries. We'll just use it for the one time. I am not so sure that's going to help the people who want to see that their salaries are going to be increased. I mean, we sat here and said we were going to do this for the probation officers. I mean, and, and how much does some of the other elected official salaries go up? Now, we're going to say then to our law enforcement, uh, now we've done all of those and now we don't have the money to yours. And I get it. I mean, I'm not disagreeing with your presentation of dollars. But I'm thinking that we may have to realign what it is we want to spend the money.
Yes. Yes, Councilor Deckard.
I think before we kind of run out of the doors saying we need to start cutting things and whatever that might mean, moving, firing people or or whatever. I think before we do that, I think counselors should take a look at options and come back with potential options. And just like we do everything else, we kind of muddle through problems until we figure out what we're doing or what we're not doing. Um, because the goal is, is that we would fix a retention issue, honor the service and not have a disruption across the county in 5,000 different ways in other departments, which will not help anybody on your end or our end or any end. Um, the question I had on a specific on this 5,000 retention bonus, are you saying do that at the start with a contract that you'll, someone will fulfill it for three years or at three years you get the 5,000? If you fulfill that three-year goal, what's your preference or thoughts on that?
Ultimately, that's up to the elected official. The department head. In my vision of it, it's upon completion of three years. A $5,000 bonus is issued to you. That's, but again, I'm a lieutenant and I have a captain and a chief deputy and the sheriff who sit above me. So that's, that's, but that's when we got together and and brought this up as representatives of our agency, that's how we envisioned it.
Yeah. Thank you very much. And the other thing I just kind of add to it is we are in uh, we're in October of 2022. We have two individuals who are, I believe it's just two, last time I checked, who put themselves forward to be a leader for this department in addition to the, the fine folks that we have. Um, I would be very interested to hear thoughts on retention, recruitment and all sorts of things down the road from them too, to have them weigh in because that's sort of an elephant in the room. We're literally, yeah, we're literally about 60 days to a sheriff of so to, so to speak, coming in, whoever it is. Um, so I think that that is something that we could hear some thoughts on that. But I, I think like most things, we have to muddle through what we can figure out here. We've had jailers talking about the same thing. Um, and got to figure it out. We did a lot this year towards retention countywide and the issue we always have when we do one thing different from the, and I learned this the hard way early on. If we do one thing different in one area, uh, we just, we hear a lot about it from a lot of people that really have strong thoughts about their areas. And I have a lot of respect for all of you. I mean, Captain Jacobs knows this. He and I go way back uh, from school days and he's answered a lot of my dumb questions over the years. Uh, but like most things, we have to muddle through what we can figure out and, and really take a look at this.
Yes.
I think.
Councilor Anderson.
So, so you know, as I, as we're going around and we're talking about this, I, you know, I, the, the fact that we have, we've also talked about how it's so hard to recruit and the fact that the City of Bloomington needs to recruit 30 to, uh, 30 to 70 new people. Is that right?
Correct. They're currently uh, supposed to have 105 members in their department. They're currently sitting at 85. They're 30 short. And that goes without them annexing any territory.
Yeah, that's just, that's a lot of people uh, that need to join the force. So we're not, you know, I, I just, that, I'm really wrestling with this in my head is like, is, is this the right answer to achieve the goals that we're, we're, I think we're all on the same page of, of getting to? And that's, that's, I'm really struggling with that in my head right now.
Uh, I'm sorry. What we also know is that you, let's say you have someone coming in that hasn't been through training and they have to have a certain amount of training and there's only just so much, so many spots open. And I think it's the law enforcement academy. Do I have that name right? Whatever it is that you have to do. So it isn't like a zip. Uh, it, in other words, if you can hire someone who's already had that training and they're ready to go, doesn't that work better? Or I'm looking to see whether or not I'm on the right track. And believe me, we haven't had this conversation before. It was just, you know, what we've been told in the past. Because that, that makes a big difference in how long it takes to get somebody really out there on the street helping us.
Sure. For somebody that's not a lateral transfer, or we consider somebody that's been in the department before, you're looking at about a year to get that person through the academy, trained and then back on the road. So uh, it's really shortens the time if we have somebody that's already had law enforcement experience, has the academy, but we can do an advanced uh, F T O field training officer uh, process and get them through quicker. Uh, one thing I want to point out as far as retention is the importance from my position where um, there's so much work involved when we do have to go through the process of someone exiting the department and having a new hire. All the equipment, all the work that goes into it, it just occupies a lot of time from the administration and you know, other parties that are involved uh, with the county to get the person in place. And with the amount that we have now, um, and I've been there over two decades. I've never seen it like this as far as our need for personnel. Um, we've always had deadlines typically. Hey, the deadline for this process is such, such date. We've gone to an open, never-ending process. So I take applications just as I get them. Throughout the weeks, we start a background check and get everything rolling um, on a continuous basis, just to try to get people in. And the highest number I've had so far is seven applications. So it's literally seven openings and seven applications. Well, you're not going to have seven qualified here. You know, you may get one or two out of that.
That uh, in the document on page, top of page two, you said in your last lateral hiring process, this yielded a a pool of four total applicants, which that's the point you're making.
Right. And then we ended up with, uh, two out of that.
Yeah.
So one backed out and one.
Two out of four.
Yes, Councilor Kim.
Thanks. Okay. Well, so do, and, and I apologize to everybody if I, if I missed this. It's not in the initial memo, but uh, do we have a, um, uh, kind of a summary of the fiscal impact of the proposed changes? Has anybody seen that?
I have a top-end dollar if that's what you're looking for.
I mean, that, that would be a good place to start. I mean, it's definitely something we're going to have to have the, the council office put together.
So using the, uh, highest paid individual, as you guys know, there's uh, yearly bumps, et cetera, from a, a person in the academy and, and then so on and so on. For ease, we use the highest paid individual at our agency to give you the highest figure it could be with a twenty percent pay increase. And that number is six hundred and forty-seven thousand eight hundred dollars.
Six hundred and forty-seven.
Six forty-seven, eight. And that is using the highest paid individual at the county right now and, um, pardon me, second highest, it's the captain's salary. We use, we use the captain's salary. Um, we use that to represent as much as it would cost on the high end. Therefore you can only get less expensive from there. Um, and just to touch on something that you, uh, you said, Councilman McKim, uh, and getting the information from Michelle in reference to PS Lit, and I understand that, I, I understand the concept you're operating on a deficit level. There's money, more money going out than coming in. I understand that. Using the information she gave me with what was remaining as of October nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, um, the PS Lit had eight sixty-two, two oh six in it. Obviously that's six hundred and forty-seven thousand eight hundred dollars we gave you was for the year. So with what's remaining, we could certainly appropriate that for the remainder of the year. And then going into two thousand and twenty-three, uh, Michelle said there was a one point four eight eight nine nine two, so one million four hundred and eighty thousand nine hundred, nine hundred and ninety-two dollars available to just help supplement this proposed pay increase, which at a year max, max is the six forty-seven, eight. So, and I understand what you're saying. I'm just, you had asked how are we going to pay for it? This isn't a proposed way. We can actually pay for it for two thousand and twenty-two and two thousand and twenty-three. And then I would obviously leave it to the council, because this is what you guys do, uh, to budget appropriately going forward from there, where maybe it could come out of lit, or you could look at how the money is being spent with the sheriff's office. But for right here, right now, those are the numbers from Michelle has provided to me October seventeenth. And that's where the numbers go for us over the next two months of the year and into two thousand and twenty-three.
Well, I guess what I would like to see from the council office is, um, a couple of, uh, it is maybe, maybe two different scenarios, maybe, uh, ten percent and twenty percent. And, uh, see what those come out with. And then also, you know, also in course, including the, I take it that number probably didn't include the five thousand dollars because you're thinking of paying that off into the future.
Correct. So you weren't. That, that's salaries. That's, that's a solid number of current employees.
Yeah.
And projected out with additional people coming on.
Okay. Uh, but I think, but I, I guess my, in addition to that request, we've also had, of course, the, um, corrections officers, uh, bargaining unit. And I guess I would like to see kind of the same, not necessarily the same numbers, but, uh, the fiscal impact of what their, their proposed increases are too. So we can look at those together. Several different scenarios. I, I'd like to see that as, I know Michelle isn't right here to, uh, to defend herself, but, uh, I'm, I'm sure, I'm sure she's good for it.
I can relay this information to, um, Michelle as well.
Thank you.
We'll get that to you guys as soon as possible.
Michelle may never attend another conference.
Um, did you have something? Ms. Munson?
Actually, I have a question.
Yes.
First. I don't completely understand the five thousand dollar retention bonus. And when that is to be encumbered and, uh, committed by the council. It is something that, uh, I'm not sure that we can uh, ourselves, um, commit future councils to doing. And that's something for our attorney to, to look into. Uh, but would you please explain, uh, how you envision the five thousand dollar retention bonus?
Absolutely. Just to clarify for you, Councilwoman Munson, the five thousand dollars is a sign-on bonus. It's not a retention bonus. So at higher, um, an individual would get hired on, and their effective service date is, let's say, January first of two thousand and twenty-three. Uh, upon completion of service of the three years coming around on January first again, three years down the road, they would be issued a five thousand dollar stipend or five thousand dollar payment for that three-year commitment to the sheriff's office. Should they leave anytime before that, they forfeit that. That allows us to give somebody incentive to join our agency, stay put for three years. It generally takes between a year and a half to two and a half years to get good at this. Um, and then start to get comfortable doing the job and looking down the road of, do I want to explore an instructor position? Do I want to explore a specialty, et cetera? And by that time, we get to the three years, hopefully they're committing to stay with us for longer than that.
Uh, so there, there would not be a problem because that is a commitment of, that would be a commitment of our council if we chose to do that.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, Counselor Hawke has one.
You had a, you had a question. My comment was only going to be that I wish we would have had this request to look at during the beginning of the budget work sessions. I know I'm like beating that drum again, but these are big things that we should have looked at one pot of money and know where we were going to put that pot of money. And now we just we keep having other things come in.
Such is the nature of how it works, I guess. Go ahead.
So I, I apologize. I'm, I'm, I keep hammering on these fiscal questions, but I really want to figure out how to make it work. The six hundred and forty-seven thousand dollar impact uh, of the rate, of the twenty percent raise, is that on top of the five percent that we've already, uh, approved or is that, uh, is that on top of that? Or does, or does that, that ticket, is that based on two thousand and twenty-two salaries? Because we've already approved a five thousand or a five percent for every county.
I understand that. Uh, it's on top of the five percent.
It is on top of the five. So it's based on.
For two thousand and twenty-two.
Uh, see, right, but we've already said for two thousand and twenty-three.
Right. But, but basically that's, it's what you've, um, what you've done is it is taken twenty percent of the two thousand and twenty-two salary.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So then when we do the, uh, the analysis of the fiscal impact, we need to take into account that we've already kind of agreed to five percent. So.
Five percent.
Yeah, we've already done.
Yes, sir. So we've done it for two thousand and twenty-two, giving you the numbers we gave you is based off two thousand and twenty-two salaries. Doesn't encompass two thousand and twenty-three yet.
Okay. Thanks. So that basically reduces that impact by.
Substantially.
In the two thousand retention that we're, did, did that also remind me, does that also go to law enforcement?
Yeah.
So.
Two thousand dollar.
That's what I'm saying.
Bonus goes to every.
Something about, except for the ones with the contract or something. I'm trying to remember how, how it's where. So, so actually you've already got five percent of what you've asked for and you got two thousand instead of five thousand. So that's where we need to bump it up from there to get you where you need to be. Because you're looking at two thousand and twenty-two and we said on top of what you're getting in two thousand and twenty-two, next year, you're going to get five percent more.
Correct.
So everybody got a five percent raise. So really you're asking not for a twenty percent raise, you're asking for fifteen percent. Right? Yes.
That's the way I, I, that's the way I read it.
Yes, fifteen and the additional five are an improvement. Easier to swallow that, we, I guess.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we knew exactly how that played.
I, I just want to, we know, we're, we're all aware. It's a big ask. We completely understand that. But we can't keep losing people to other agencies in our community. We've seen what happens across the street. And we just, we were trying to combat it from happening before it cripples us.
Understood.
Yeah, we appreciate that definitely. Um, other questions from council here? No? All right. I think Counselor Deckard's, uh, advice was, uh, was a good, solid thing. Um, I think we need to get some information from our office and look at what is feasible, um, short of moving positions into a place where we would be eliminating them. I don't like that idea. Um, but I, but I do think that, um, looking at the fiscal impact and, um, working on what we can afford essentially. Um, so unfortunately, I guess I'm saying I'll get back to you on this. Um, but I really appreciate you being here and really presenting your argument because getting a memo is one thing, but talking with you all and having the opportunity to have the discussion is really meaningful. And, um, and it really, it, it helps us, I think, um, explore kind of what options we have, where you're really coming from, kind of, um, getting a little context around what you need. So I do appreciate that. And we, we will um, get some information on, on the numbers and see what, what we can put together.
Well, on behalf of the mayor body and, and the bargaining committee, thank you for sitting with us today. We appreciate you putting us on the agenda and making some time for us.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Take care.
We understand the magnitude of the situation. Thank you.
Maybe we can do part of it one year and then do the rest of it next year. And we know that.
Okay. So it seems ridiculous, but now we will go to a, the riveting topic of our two thousand and twenty-three council meeting calendar. Um, in front of you, uh, you have a draft of, um, a two thousand and twenty-three calendar for, um, PAC meetings, council regular session, work session. Um, very colorfully coded by Michelle. She even put the county holidays on there for us. It's quite lovely. Um, and it follows the same schedule that we currently have in place. Um, so we're still doing second Tuesdays for regular section, session. And then fourth Tuesdays for the work sessions, PAC meetings on the first Tuesday of the month. Um, she circled in red, the red circly parts, she texted me and they are. Um, okay, the red circle on September twentieth is the target date to have the budgets advertised. Twenty-second is the last date in order to have a public hearing on October third. So she's just kind of highlighting some deadlines for us in between. October seventeenth, uh, which is also outlined in red is the adoption. Um, and since it falls on a two, but on the fourth Tuesday, it could also be a work session. One less meeting, I suppose. Um, September twelfth is also highlighted in red there. And, um, she was indicating that similar to what we did this year, we could have a combination regular session and budget session, um, just to try to keep some of those regular, uh, items moving in the month of September. Um, so this is the proposed schedule. Does anyone have, um, comments or questions? Yes.
I also want to highlight the fact that PAC meetings are held at only four months out of the year. Uh, that is a recognition of the fact that we want to be getting our PAC business done before budgets. Uh, and, uh, we think that we can get our, our business done in that timeframe. Uh, we've noticed that when we start holding PAC meetings in August and September, it gets really clunky. We have a hard time meeting and there's not a lot on the agenda because of budgets. So just wanted to point that out.
And I think at least that doing them early in the year was a recommendation in the WIS maintenance plan.
That's right. That's right. And, and historically, uh, PAC used to only meet once a year. Uh, but, uh, we, you know, think, you know, four times a year is, is sufficient for the work that we need to do.
Okay. Um, any other comments or questions?
My only comment is kind of do this again next year.
Oh, God. You love it. You love it. You love it. Um.
Somebody have a pen. None of these pens work.
Not yet.
I, I also want to say.
Rejecting the pen.
On my, I want to say on my watch, sometimes we had PAC meetings four times a week if we're going to pick on Kim Michelle though.
Oh, my gosh.
When I chair, no one wants to come because they're like, oh, he reads too dramatically. Always.
Peter, listen to Peters.
All right. I am, will advise Michelle or I guess Megan, you could advise Michelle that we thought this was a beautiful calendar and thank you for putting it together.
Absolutely.
And we will consider that discussion concluded. That brings us to council comments. Are there any counselors who have comments to make? Okay, Counselor Hawke says buy better pens.
Hi.
It's perfectly fine. We'll get over the pen issue. I think we can handle it. Um, we will move now to, uh, the last item on the agenda, which is simply a reminder that, um, we, our next scheduled meeting is going to be Tuesday, November fifteenth at five thirty PM here in the Nat U Hill meeting room instead of the eighth, because the eighth is election day. So we bumped our regular session by one week. And so we will see you all here. And that brings us to adjournment. We are adjourned.
I actually have a quick announcement.
Darn it. There's a quick announcement. No adjournment.
Back it up. Um, I would like to remind council members that today, tomorrow and Thursday, you can tour the Fullerton Pike, um, site from four to five PM. We've arranged for parking in the Monroe Hospital lot and there's a shuttle that can take you to Fullerton Pike. So if you need information on how to contact the person doing the shuttle, I can provide it.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. Are, are you making a comment?
I didn't want to, you want me to say that?
It's council.
Okay. Okay. I've been informed that there will be a meeting at the AMVAT's, um, six o'clock Thursday evening, uh, to discuss annexation of one A and one B. Everyone that's interested, especially of one A and one B folks, show up.
All right. Thank you.
It's important to county government.
Yeah, it is. Are there any other council comments? Yes, counsel.
I just want to compliment, I think every once in a while we should do this. The, the fact that the county council does a strong job, not to pat backs, but I'll do it, um, on getting through many of these difficult issues. And we do it in a very strong way of collaborating, figuring out, looking at the numbers, doing this, doing our homework. And it's not very flashy. I think that's awesome. And it's always a relief when sometimes I listen to the news and I don't always see that. So thank you very much, all of you. So it's aw- awesome to serve with you.
Hey, I agree with that sentiment. Um, I just want to say thank you to, uh, Ms. King and Ms. Miller over there for, um, staffing our bench. for, um, staffing our bench this evening. Appreciate it. And, um, Michelle had a conference to go to, so hopefully she's enjoying herself there. Yes. Um, all right, now we are adjourned. Thank you.
Ooh, we're not adjourned because we have some signatures going around. We are adjourned, but we are adjourned, but we wait.